The following is a rebroadcast of the Newark City Schools Board of Education's most recent general monthly meeting.
Form of five. Say the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Doug, any resolutions or recognitions?
No, we don't have anybody here tonight. I know the next one we'll have is Seth will do a presentation in August on our new web page, which is going, is it live now Seth, or next week?
No, sometime this week.
I know, you told me that earlier today, I apologize. So sometime this week, and so get on, check it out, and Seth's gonna play around with it the next five or six weeks, and that high traffic time will come back up in early August, so we're ready to roll.
Any special reports?
No, not to see.
Okay, communications from the floor, anyone who would like to address the board can step to the podium, give your name, your address, and you have up to five minutes, at which time Jeff will do something mean.
Good evening, my name is Donna Gibson, I work for Mental Health America of Lincoln County. We've been doing some work at Heritage Middle School, and I wanted to, we all want to gather and say something about Mr. Sereno, who is retiring, and we're very sad about that, so we brought something we'd like to read and give to you. When everybody drives up in front of the Heritage Middle School, the first thing you notice each morning is that the principal, Mr. Sereno, is standing there to shake hands or high-five each student while calling them each by their name. He says hi to the parents and guardians as well. From the first time those of us at Mental Health America noticed this, we were all very impressed. This impressive start by a caring principal almost every day is an example of pride and respect. At Heritage Middle School, you not only see the pride, respect, and excitement among the children who attend the school, you can literally feel it. Among staff, there's a camaraderie, as well as respect for one another, that carries over to the students. The education the children receive at Heritage is much more than mathematics, English, or science. They are taught life skills, safety, team spirit, and how to extend a warm hand to others. Mr. Sereno is a force and shining light at this school, and has obtained the love, respect, and gratitude of everyone who comes through those doors. Mr. Sereno's door is always open to anyone in need, especially his kids. The position of school principal is much more than a title or a job to this man, he truly cares about what happens to each and every one of his students. He knows them all by name, and he also connects them with their problems and their feelings, which is not something we commonly see. I have been working with the after-school program connecting students and staff to the R-Rules, which is a junior version of the Bridges Out of Poverty program I coordinate at Mental Health America. The program covers goal-setting, communications, life skills, collaboration with others, and each child learning how to make good decisions, and how to ask for help with decisions they may feel unsure of. Girls in Progress is another project MHA connects with at Heritage. Staff members go unpaid, on our own time, each morning, and we all rotate mornings through the week to work with several young ladies at Heritage by encouraging character-building, mental health discussions, needlecraft, hand-eye coordination, life skills, financial literacy, budgeting, eliminating communication barriers, discussion of relationships, and the knowledge of how to create and maintain this personal safe space. Mr. Sereno knows that these young ladies are at risk for not making the best choices in their life, and some may get discouraged and just decide to drop out of school someday. We all work together as a team to show that they can succeed, that they can make good choices and achieve big things in their lives. We try to lead them by example, and help them through the struggles they might face. Mr. Sereno has known the benefit of this team approach, and has encouraged us and the students along the way. We are going to miss him a lot, and we wish him all the best in his retirement, and we just want to know if we can clone him.
The world take two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else I'd like to address the board? Okay, that being the case, we will move on to treasurer's recommendations. Jeff?
Item 2A is approval of board meeting minutes for the May 27, 2014 special meeting. Item 2B is approval of May 2014 financial reports, including interest earnings in the amount of $3,875.62. The general fund has a balance of $20,270,000. Bond Retirement has $1,790,000. Permanent Improvement has $1,450,000. Building Fund has $130,000. Food Service has $1,270,000. OSFC Project Local has $120,000. OSFC Project State Share has $1,610,000. Classroom Facilities has $2,790,000. Other miscellaneous is $860,000. For a total of $30,290,000 in the bank, and that does match to the Park National Bank statement. Item 2C is approval of the fiscal year 2014 Permanent Supplemental Appropriation Resolution. There's two items on there. The first one's O-24 Fund, Employee Benefits Self-Inurance Fund of $60,000, and Fund 401 Auxiliary Services for $8,756,000. The medical self-insurance fixed cost for July was the O-24 number, and the Montessori allocation change was the 401 number that changed. Item 2D is approval of temporary appropriation for fiscal year 2015. The total appropriation is for $87,216,809. You give it a first shot now to get us started and get us into business starting July 1, and then October I'll come back with a more permanent and final appropriation, hopefully. So unless the board wants me to, I'll just read the total instead of reading each fund appropriation, because you do have copies. Then item 2E is authorization to increase designated fund balance. It's recommended the Board of Education authorized Treasurer Jeff Anderson to increase the designated fund balance for medical insurance claims with a $200,000 general fund transfer. That is to get us started off on the right foot with our self-insurance going into fiscal year 2015, that needs to be increased by that much. Item 2F is authorization to pay invoices. It is recommended the Board of Education approve payment for two invoices in the amount totaling $81,364.14, as shown in the appendix. Both of these are for the Special Education Program that was built from rehab and associates, and the bills was actually for March and April. More than 60 days past due, and they're over $3,000. That's the reason on the board agenda for the board to approve.
Make your motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have questions. Jeff, will you distinguish for me the $60,000 that is in C for the Self-Inurance Health Fund, and the $200,000?
The $60,000 was the additional money needed to do our dental program, which was already self-funded.
Okay, that's for the dental program.
The $200,000 is to set up our reserve-
For the health fund.
For the medical insurance that we're going to this year.
And then, and I apologize if you've told me this, but did we ever get an explanation on why the items in F were late?
Linda Price is here to address that for you, if you want to.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Linda, could you come to the microphone, please?
Josh, the piece that we brought up?
Pardon?
Do they have the piece that-
They actually got copies of the invoices.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you wanted to know why those two were late?
Yeah.
Special Ed has to flex their funds from one category to another frequently because of the unpredictability of that, and in this case it was OT and PT monies. We knew that those were going to be short, and we had predicted that, but we moved the money in the CCIP, and that took a while to get that cleared. So by the time that got cleared, and we got the PO open, those were already late.
So these are overtime, and is that what they are?
No, this is occupational therapy and physical therapy, sorry.
Sorry, I missed the acronym.
Those are contract services.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do think it's important to mention on this $200,000, that that is the starting point in our self-insurance, which we went to this year, or this coming year, that we will be self-insured with stop losses, which will save us a significant amount on our health insurance compared to a standard health insurance program. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Jeff, call the rule, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent's recommendation is done.
Before I start it, I want to call your attention to item 8A, which the grandfather personnel in the severance package, you have in your stack a replacement for that, which we'll read, is recommended that the Board of Education approve that any administrative or classified exempt employee hired prior to August 1, 2013 be grandfather into a severance package for five years of service in the Newark City School District, excluding rehire-retires. Although if you retire once, you're actually just resigning, you're not retiring, you can't retire twice, so that wouldn't apply to that. And then you have the contract that was Article 34, 81209 through 212, and the new contract language to state that. So it's not one person specific, it relates to anybody. And that's my recommendation on a fair way to treat somebody who may not have 10 years and is going to retire, that was hired prior to that contract change. And you can ask questions when we get their substitute in there. Okay, under item 3A Personnel, I call your attention to Matt Hazelton, who was hired last meeting as a Dean of Students. Matt is resigning his science teaching position at the high school, leaves of absence, seen Nicole Bowers for childcare. Under item 3, Certified Employees, Hannah Burnside, and that's Burnside with one U, you can cross out the other U, Amber Detra, Amy Hamilton, Kaitlyn Pierce, and then we have three, if you stand up when I call your name, in case you haven't met all of the board members, Rob Russell, he's a graduate of Newark here, and we had a position posting late last year, we tried to get Rob in, or in there, and so patience, my man, and you're here tonight. Rob's worked with our football program, and kids throughout the year, the last few years. Good, good young man. I almost said you're a good boy, but you're a good young man. Sorry. Molly Sargent, who will be teaching first grade at Cherry Valley, all the way from Cincinnati, she's one of those Hoot Day people down there, but we appreciate, Molly's been up here a few times, and so she moved the area, and still doing her reading endorsement, and working hard on that, so welcome Molly. And then we have Lindsay Schaefer, back here, who's from Mansfield, and by way of Canton, I don't know if it's Walsh or Malone, I get to Malone, who will be teaching kindergarten at Ben Franklin here tonight, and I've asked our new hires to please shake your hand, look you in the eye, and tell you who they are, so if you get a chance tonight, we'll appreciate if they get a chance to meet you. So welcome Lindsay. Supplemental contracts, attention to Holly Culver, who is a John Clem teacher, Holly's been teaching or coaching volleyball at Sheridan, and will be our new head girls volleyball coach. Under item 7, again substitutes, you see those quite a bit, you know, it's kind of a never-ending issue for us to make sure we have plenty of subs as we go in. And then item 8A is approval of the grandfather, which I read earlier.
Then we've also got these two people, correct?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Tom, thanks for bringing it up. The appointments and assignments, the addendum, and you know that we actually have a name that came across about 10 minutes ago, or 10 minutes prior to coming down here, and we'll put on the 30, so we're in pretty good shape, we're in really good shape for the beginning of June with our positions, and I compliment Barb, and Mindy and Maura, and Linda and Jean, and everybody who's been out there, making sure we get the best of the best out there. And that would be Kelly Ward and Hillary Zerhorst, so. Items 1 through 8.
Do we have a motion to approve Superintendent's recommendations, 1 through 8?
Still move.
Second. Go ahead, Tim.
Mr. Carr, there's a second.
Yep.
Okay, discussion, questions?
Question? Walk me through the implications of this substitute, what the implication is of us grandfathering anybody hired before August of 2013 into this. What does that change? Tell me in the real world how it changes things.
It really doesn't change anything, other than our administrators classified have went under that part of the contract, so they would receive that benefit. Mark is the-
Severance benefit.
Right, Mark is the only one that would have the amount of years in to do that, although others could do it, retire early, and that's why we wanted to include everybody. So a person might have, they might reach 60 years of age and might have 25 years in, but only been with the district seven or eight years. This allows them to receive that benefit they once had, that this new contract had taken away from them. So, and so it wasn't done in an attempt to hurt anybody, and so it was just-
It was a fix on the contract.
Right. And so with the way it was, you know, we were just basically, Mark was the only one who officially would have his years in, we just wanted to include anybody who might retire early, so. I'll give you a good example, on that works for me, Patty Stockers, my assistant treasurer. She's got like 27 years in total between the school district she was at before and now. If she works for the next two years, and gets, she'll have nine years total in on Newark City Schools. Her mom and dad are 86 years old and 88 years old, okay? And she's fearful that she would have to take retirement a little early to take care of her parents. Well, she came to the district when it was only required five years to get that supplemental pay going out the door. And if we didn't grandfather her in, it's hurting her, and it's not fair to her because she hired in looking at stuff like that at her total compensation package.
Is there anyone who would have been hired, for instance, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, August of 2012, that now qualifies for this much, much earlier than anybody else? Or do we-
No, because from that standpoint, with our buyout, we concentrated on zero to two, so we haven't hired anybody with an abundant amount of years, nor do we plan to.
Okay, answers my questions. So we're sort of putting the administrators back where they were.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Jeff, would you call the rule, please?
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Thank you. Under item B, Students in Curriculum, Special Education Contract with St. Clairsville District. Also, the adoption of textbooks, recommended the Board of Education adopt the textbooks as announced as an intent at the May 5, 2014 Board of Education meeting, as shown below. College Physics, Satrikik opposed to AP Edition, 3rd Edition, 2015. There are other Newark High School Limited Bus Service, and just for the information for the board and the community, this would be year three. I appreciate Dave and his staff, Jason Key, putting together a plan to pick up high school kids around the district. And the way we've set it up is that we've had the kids tell us, where do you want picked up? Where's a good stop for you in the neighborhood? And so we adjust it from here to here. The first year we did it, it cost us about $16,000, $18,000, because if you remember, it was half a year. So we just did a cost analysis, it's about $33,000 expense, but we have a lot of kids who take advantage of it in the district. So it is working, it is working. And so I appreciate the board, and Dave, and Jason, and that group putting that together. Gifts, Monetary State Farm Youth Advisory Board, $500 to the ROTC program. Monetary, Ms. Barbara Quackenbush, $134. She won the 50/50 at the, she kept a couple hundred, no, she didn't keep anything, but she won the 50/50, she was also the speaker that night, and did a good job. It was her night to recognize the kids, and so Barb, thanks for giving those funds back to the program. And then, under Business, Approval Contracts for Nursing Services, and as read below, that's Blessed Sacrament in St. Francis, and auxiliary funds are used for that. So items 1 through 6, I recommend be approved.
We have a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Explain to me, if you would, how a contract between Newark City Schools and St. Clairsville Richland City School District works.
Okay, we have kids placed around the state-
Okay.
-that we're responsible for. Maybe it'd be foster care, which is probably the case there, that we're responsible for special education services. And so we contract with that district to provide it.
Thank you.
And that is something we have no option on.
No, by law, we're required to do it.
Okay, thank you.
I was curious, on the bus services, we're still tracking the usage and everything, aren't we, Dave, to make sure the level we're providing is appropriate?
Yes, I had Jason, we printed numbers on, and we actually added, not even more stops, but actually we did have a little bit more capacity on the buses, I think that's like bumped up some, we still go to Lincolnburg, West Main, Kirby Downs, and 21st Street, Ben Franklin, Carson, and then Garfield, North Cedar. As it turned out, that Carson, North Cedar, we were actually packing one of the buses, and Jason had to have a second one kind of loop through there again to make sure we would get them all to the high schools. Still the same stops, still that same group of five, and we're taking them back to the same five spots at night. He just happened to have another, he had another bus, because he was putting kids on one of those that was making that stop for particularly the Carson and Heritage area. So, yeah, he's keeping track of it, and it seems to be going along pretty well, and kids are taking advantage of it.
And I do want to mention, that was supposed to be my ticket that Barb got, but she jumped in front.
Oh, yeah.
You would have donated it all back too, right?
Probably added some to it.
Plus a little bit, yeah. I wouldn't have been cheap like her and just donate my winnings back. Okay, if no other questions or comments, Jeff, call the rule, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, assuming we have no Board of Education reports or recommendations, so we'll move to board discussion. I pass.
I'd like to welcome Robert, Molly, and Lindsay. It was nice meeting all three of you, it was really wonderful to have you there, greatest as we came in the door, so good luck to you.
It's good to see new teachers coming in. Watched one of you play a little football for us a few years back, and so enjoyed that, and it'd be good to have you helping our kids. I'm excited about the summer, I know my kids wake up every morning going, "I wish I could go to school, Dad," and, okay, not really. But hopefully the kids are enjoying the summer. Keep them reading over the summer. The millions of people that watch this, just letting them know, keep the kids reading over the summer, keep them engaged, don't let them fall away from that, because that's important. And that's a good time to be a Newark Wildcat.
Okay, Tim touched on it, but I wanted to mention about working hard over the summer. Band, football, cross-country, they're all working hard over the summer. If you're taking an AP class next year, don't wait till August 1 to start your AP work. Start it now in June, work hard, it'll pay off in the fall.
I just want the public to know that the Treasurer's Office doesn't get to close down during the summer, and if you have any questions on the school financing, it's a perfect time to come in and talk to us, and it's even a time, if you come in July and August, that you can even meet the auditors that are auditing our books every year. So if you've got any questions about the finances of Newark City Schools, where does the money come from, where the money goes, and come on in during the summer, the Treasurer's Office and Treasurer's staff will be there.
Which closet do you keep the auditors in?
I know one that's the smallest, so that they don't stay too long.
I used to be an auditor, I know that trick from the wrong side.
Okay, I appreciate Mrs. Gibson coming in tonight, and the work of the mental health agencies here in town, I think she might have stepped out, and for recognizing Mr. Sereno, who's done a wonderful job down there. And I'd also like to point out some of the points that she made, all of our principals. We have a few of them in here, I've walked several times with Mr. Foulon out to the front of the lot, welcoming students on campus in the morning, and I think you can see what a difference that makes, you know that. I know Chet does it, because occasionally if he's out, I go to Cherry Valley, and the question I get is, "Where's Mr. Coleman at?" And I like to hear that, because that means he's out front welcoming people. And I know, one of my first experiences with that was Ms. Quackenbush, when she was the principal at Hillview, knew every name of everybody getting out of the car, and those type of things, and we like to hear that, we all like to hear that. And so I appreciate Mr. Sereno and his leadership at Heritage, and what he's been doing. Also, point out the Junior ROTC program with Presenting Colors, and, boy, they've had a heck of a year. They've been to the fairgrounds for the district basketball tournament, about, in front of about 3,000 people. They took that into the Schottenstein Center, and did two games, about 12,000 to 14,000 people apiece. From there, they went over to Crew Stadium, what they have, Mark over there, 18, 19, 18, 19,000. And now, from there, they're headed to the Cincinnati Bengals game next fall, to do it in front of, how many Hoot Days do they have yelling in there? I don't know, probably 70,000. Yeah, and the neat thing about that is, yeah, it's a- Yeah, well, I'll become a Bengal fan pretty, on that Sunday, but-
I think a board member should get it.
Absolutely. But I did want to make that special notation, because, you know, that says Newark across their shirts when they're there, and it was really neat, it's neat to hear that when they walk out. So we appreciate our kids and what they're doing there. And I know the other day, I was there last week, a couple days after school was out, and there had to be 10, 15 kids practicing and working over there, and so I thought that was really neat, and a big compliment to their program. The past month and a half, I break the school year down into three seasons, fall, winter, and spring, and a lot of, a lot of it, we talk a lot about the ballgames. Of course, when you hit the winter season, you've got Christmas programs, and the spring is really one of my favorite times, because there's some ballgames going on, beautiful nights to go out and watch the kids participate. But, boy, what I really like, and what I'm really fresh off of right now, is just our programs and our buildings are spectacular. And we have a lot of good people, working with a lot of good kids in this district. So one of the things I wanted to point out about that, every time I go somewhere, the gym is packed, or the auditorium. And that's great support from our parents and grandparents and community members watching our kids, and I know whether it be an orchestra, a band, a choir, and I know a lot of times they're performing together, and I think that's great teamwork. We got a really good surprise here one day, when the kids from- when the kids from Wilson Middle School came over, and it was the band, the choir, and the orchestra presenting a program together in the middle of the day. They were going from one building to another and had some time, and so they came by here and did a program for our workers here in the building, and just wonderful. We've got a lot of good talent here, and the numbers are out there, and I just like to see that. It's a special place. And as Tim Carr says, it's a great time to be a Cat. It always has been and always will be. So, thanks.
Thank you, Doug. I'd like to also welcome the new teachers aboard. I think you'll find it exciting, rewarding. And I was thinking here a couple minutes ago, I think this is Rob's second return to Newark, because I don't think he started high school here, did you, and then saw the light? I was thinking he spent part of your high school career elsewhere.
Oh, no.
Were you? Okay.
Don't try to call him out.
I'm thinking somebody, no, I'm trying to say he's seen the light twice.
Seen how he does under pressure.
Friend of yours.
You're being watched.
You already voted in, man. You're good.
You're in. You're solid.
You're good.
Now, I'm trying to compliment the guy saying he's seen this twice and come in.
He's just trying to give you a hard time.
I'm used to that. I'd like to congratulate Toby Hardwick. Went over and watched him run on Saturday. Saturday didn't go quite as obviously he would have liked, but he's had a fantastic senior season, both in cross-country and track, and it was just exciting to watch his progress through the season. Also, I'd like to thank the students who have been taping us this year. You know, I don't think, you know, I think maybe Tim's exaggerating a little bit when he talks about the millions of people that watch, but it is surprising how many comments we do get, people that do watch it. You know, they must be bored a bit. But anyway, you are providing a real service to the community, and thank you, and thank Mr. Philhauer. Good luck on your new endeavor. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show move.
Second on that.
Second was Tim?
Yep. We're done. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.